Good evening, I'm going to call the Columbia County Board of Commissioners December 20th meeting to order. Ask the Vice Chairman, Richson, if he'll open us with an invocation.
Please bow with me, please. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you thanking you and praising you, Lord, for who you are. We thank you for your mercy, we thank you for your grace. But most of all, we thank you for the season that we're coming in and that we're celebrating. Christmas with the gift of your son that we all may experience. Ask you to be with us tonight. Decisions to be made, we ask for wisdom and guidance as we go through. We ask for protection for all the men that are defending our country and protecting them. We just thank you and praise you for all these things.
Please stand for the pledge.
The pledge reads as follows: "The United States of America is a republic which sustains one nation, God, peaceful, liberty, and justice for all."
We have a full quorum of commissioners. Commissioners, you have the minutes from the previous meeting in your package of December 6th. If they meet your approval, I'll accept a motion to do so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Questions? On the favor, raise your right hand. Aries, Johnson, are we set on our agenda tonight?
Leave it ready for your approval, Mr. Chairman.
It is approved. Well, again, just welcome to our final commission meeting of 2022. Proud to say we have some of Columbia County's finest in the room. I know that we have some folks with Columbia County Youth Leadership here. Where are you guys? Why don't you stand up and tell us your name and the school you go to, please? Welcome, glad you're here. Oh, one over here, oh. Congratulations, welcome. We also have two, I believe, two young men here working on their Eagle Scout. Joseph and Michael, are y'all here? Introduce yourselves to the crowd. Onto the consent agenda. Commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you. Each item has been through the necessary committee. See the votes to be placed on this agenda, so if they still meet with your approval, I'll accept one vote to pass them all.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept these items as presented.
Second.
Questions? On the favor, raise your right hand. That passes. Onto you, Commissioner Skinner, I believe you're first up.
I make a motion to approve the request for a rezoning. R1 to S1 for a portion of the property located at tax map 07705A, subject to the conditions enumerated in the November 17th 22 Planning Commission Report.
Is the applicant here? Come up and just state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
I'm Adam Cotter, 1020 Peninsula Crossing, Evans, Georgia.
When I looked at the package, Adam, you want to put a, calling this a HOA amenity, but it's not in the development, but you had the land to put it in. So if it was in the development, you wouldn't need special zoning. Can you explain that?
Sure. So when we originally laid out the development, which is right below it, we had an area set aside for community area. But when we did the wetland study, that area turned out to be more wellland than we could put anything in. We said, okay, where can we move this to? So we split it up to the top of the property. And when we went to present that, we said, well, we need to rezone it regardless of where it is, because there is no zoning consideration for a clubhouse that we're aware of. So after talking to the planning department, they said, well, let's try to get that rezoned just for this purpose. Okay.
Like I say, it doesn't need to be rezoned. Correct me, Matt, if I'm wrong, it doesn't need rezoning if it's in the property?
Typically, if we have an amenity for the neighborhood in the neighborhood, it's part of the zoning. So for instance, I have a whole lot of straight zoning neighborhoods, but let's say River Oaks, I believe that's a straight R2. If they were to have a clubhouse inside the neighborhood, we wouldn't require an S1 zoning inside that neighborhood. The first time Mr. Cotter and I spoke, it was, I guess his dream was a lot bigger than what you've settled on here. You were looking for an event venue and bringing other people in. You had a lot more.
Yeah, we had talked about doing different things. And we said, what we really wanted was to, the overall goal here is to put in this as a central market. You guys come, it's got its pickleball courts in it, it's got its meeting areas in it. So as we're putting the neighborhood, we're having that come in first, because what we got, when I talk to my neighbors in, since I live in River Island, one of the big complaints they have is they bought lots, but they promised that the developer was going to do something, and the developer never did, or it was years later, or it changed as it went through. We said, all right, we'll put our clubhouse in first, let people see it, look it over, and then go through and sell the lots. People can see what they're getting.
Right, I guess my point was if this structure, and Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, if this structure was inside the footprint of where the lots are, you wouldn't need to be rezoned S1.
I believe that'd be the stance we would take if it was strictly a clubhouse for the neighborhood. It's a neighborhood amenity. Now, plan director here, Scott, do you want to add to that?
All right. I mean, I think that's how we interpreted this, was essentially the development itself, the plan, the layout. You know, we have, just about all of our subdivisions have some sort of, you know, amenity that goes with the development itself. There are a few that don't, but generally speaking, most developments that occur today now have some sort of an amenity package within the development and not typically outside of the property lines proper. So, you know, when we looked at that and evaluated it, we understood that that's, the intent was to have an amenity. It's just the location of it created the possibility that the amenity gets built and there is a, an off chance that the development never occurs. This is an amenity without a subdivision. So in essence, that becomes an event space of some sort that is not tied to, is not an amenity of a particular subdivision. So that's why we felt it was more appropriate to pursue this as an S1 rather than just, you know, an ancillary use of the subdivision itself.
The reason would it not be part of the neighborhood? That's what I, I'm not understanding.
I had something to that. I think I can better explain. If you could go back to the slide that had the green shading. One, there we go. Okay, so Mr. Cotter purchased two properties, this parcel here, and then this large parcel here. He intends to keep a large portion of the rear of the property for his personal home. When we did the original concept for the plan, we did a subdivision layout and submitted it to the Planning Commission for review as a concept plan for the neighborhood, and we had a community center area identified over in here. And the property line for the subdivision was basically where that green line is.
But the property line for the subdivision could be on the other side of that yellow box.
It just encompassed that, couldn't it? I mean, just...
Theoretically, I assume so. It wasn't on the concept plan that the Planning Commission approved. So if we were to take that approach, I suppose we would need to, yeah, if you can go back to the plan that had the, there we go. I guess we could redraw the subdivision line to look like this. Exactly stay within the lines. I didn't do quite so well in kindergarten in that regard, but you get the idea. But it would still look awkward and have the appearance that it's, you know, next to the neighborhood. So I guess six one, half a dozen the other, it could be...
We're all in for, we're all in for HOA amenities. We're not all in for standalone, I'm speak for myself, for standalone venues in the middle of more residential. And so, and the challenge is subdivision hadn't happened. So basically, you're asking for a zoning for a commercial building in the middle of all this residential area.
That's right. Now, it may be helpful to remember that we've spent millions of dollars on land here, and the only way we can unlock the value of that land is to put the neighborhood in. It would be foolish for us to not. I mean, I guess in theory, we could have put the, you know, clubhouse there and then nothing else, but we would be throwing away millions of dollars, well, tens of millions of dollars, we can talk about by the time it's all said and done, for a venue, and that just doesn't make financial sense to anybody. So if we did too, we could go back and redraw the neighborhood with that, but we're getting back to the exact, either way, we own all the land. Either way, we've got this vaccine.
Does the HOA own this property where the clubhouse is going, or do you own that personally?
Actually, I own everything there. So even all the neighborhood land is currently owned by me, because none of it's been sold.
Right, but then you'd have to have the entrance through the neighborhood, not on a separate road.
Well, actually, the road connects right there. You have two entrances. It has an entrance, the neighborhood butts up to it.
Would your intent be to deed the clubhouse to the HOA once the HOA is up and running and owned by the residents?
Yeah, we could do that. I mean, the goal here is to have something, we even put in our submittal that the HOA controls this, the HOA runs this, and we'd have no problem submitting it over to them to own.
But at what point do you not the HOA?
Once we sell the lots.
All of them, or just a percentage of them? What's your goal, to get it turned over?
That's an interesting question. I haven't really thought through that.
When your narrative mentions HOA several times, but there's not an HOA yet?
Yeah, well, there's, yeah, because right now, everything is just us, because we haven't built the neighborhood out yet. We don't have an HOA yet in place for it. But I can tell you, my goal is not to run a neighborhood. My goal is to build a house right here and happily retire.
But didn't you tell staff initially that you wanted to have a venue?
Well, we had talked about several uses for this land, and yeah, we had said one use for this land that we could have is to have some kind of venue down here in support of the neighborhood. And then we said, well, let's just make it a clubhouse for the neighborhood. That's why we put in things like pickleball courts, put in things like gardens all the way around it. Really, what I'm trying to do here is maximize the value of the land. I'm trying to get the most value for every lot by saying, look, this is what we've got. Same reason we've got the trails going across here, we've got the lake, the trail going out to the river, the dock right over here on the river. What we're trying to do is build premier neighborhood for this area, and make it actually very, well, exclusive is the wrong word to use, make it a very premier neighborhood. So our smallest lot is two-thirds of an acre, and it goes up from there. Lots will be selling above $200,000 per lot, and you're talking about a very limited number of homes, 48 right now, very exclusive neighborhood with the amenities to go along with it. So that's the whole goal here. And I can't unlock the value of the land without the community center.
But I think it goes back to the point that was being made earlier. If this was part of, that area was part of this neighborhood, then you could build whichever you wanted to build first. You wouldn't, you wouldn't have to have an S1 zoning.
S1 zoning gives you the ability to have a public venue here, as opposed to if it's part of the neighborhood, we wouldn't even be here, right? So there's...
Literally change the lot lines, and we don't care if you build the amenity first or the houses first, you can build whichever you want to build first.
Well, if that's agreeable to you guys, I'm okay with that. It was our understanding that we could not even build this inside the neighborhood without rezoning it S1.
I don't think that's true. Is anybody under that impression?
I mean, I would hope that we didn't convey that to you, because that would certainly be inconsistent with what we've done with every other subdivision. I would believe that we were, at least thought we were clear that we, if in this configuration, it would need to be S1, again, because you were going to, in theory, lead with the amenity package. And if you never built the subdivision, we'd have, excuse me, an amenity package that didn't have a subdivision to go with it. So that was where we were leaning towards the S1. So if we miscommunicated that, I guess I apologize for that.
It could have also come from early on our conversation. I believe you had the clubhouse sitting somewhere up here. It was a little different layout, I believe you had.
Yeah.
And we talked about it. At that point, we were talking about having weddings, that type of stuff, small gatherings, smaller. That absolutely has to have an S1 zoning.
Sure.
So that might have been where this all resulted from, from the original idea, but now that you've moved it here, I think we're okay, as long as the neighborhood lot line has changed.
I think one of the things just to mention, just throw it out there, is if you build the amenity first, let's just say that all this was figured out, and this is the clubhouse and the subdivision, right, and you just rezoned a subdivision. If events started happening in the facility prior to the subdivision being built, then I think that would be against the zoning, just, not that that is your intent, but just know that if that started happening, that would be more of a commercial venue and would be against your zoning of a...
As opposed to it being used by the residents?
I just had a question of clarification more for the staff, but I'll direct to the commissioners. To clarify, the way that we make this a part of the subdivision is we would resubmit the concept plan with that as a part of the subdivision to the Planning Commission? Is that correct?
And then it wouldn't even come back to us, correct?
That concept plan, as approved and built, then locks into that concept as a neighborhood, not a special event venue beside a neighborhood. S1, R1, R1, RA?
R1.
R1.
Mr. Chairman, there's not a second on the floor. I would ask, is this an appropriate time to allow them to...
Withdraw?
Either withdraw or postpone with, giving them time to come up with a different concept to bring back.
Do you have to take action on the motion?
You can just let it die on the vine.
Yeah, it could, yeah, it could die for lack of a second. He could amend his motion.
Could I ask a court of clarification?
Sure.
If I understand.
Sure.
Because if we need to resubmit, you know, we have to do what we have to do. I'm not particularly thrilled about going through the whole process and paying all that money to redraw a line, but the comment that was made by our attorney, this event that is also our, this clubhouse is also our sales office, it's also where people will be, you know, doing sales out of. Where's the line between, and that it's part of a neighborhood and not...
I think sales, certainly, that's part, I mean, that's in furtherance of the neighborhood. I'm just, I'm not saying this is your intent, but if there started being hosted parties there and there's no neighborhood there, then it looks like it's not a clubhouse. And I'm not saying that's your intent, I'm just giving you the advance warning.
I'm just thinking down the road going, you know, if we had a sales party, we said, hey, come look at the lots, you know, everybody come and look at it, it's a marketing issue, a sales party. It gets to be kind of a gray area of what's legal and what's not, because we don't want to break any laws, we don't want to cause a problem. Everybody's trying to figure out, so where's the line?
I think the line is drawn when you rent the venue out to somebody else and they start having their own issues there. If you're having your own things that are supporting what you're doing, then you're probably okay.
Okay.
But if you're renting it out to other people and they're, and they're coming and using it as a standalone venue, and it's not, part of the neighborhood's not been built out, then that's when you would have needed this S1 zoning that you're asking for now.
So is there a particular limit in how much of the neighborhood has to be built out? If we have half the lot sold and houses being built out, is it a third? Is it, again, I'm not trying to be cause trial, I'm trying to figure out where, where's the line?
I think if you're developing the neighborhood, and that's the first thing you decide to build in there, make it your sales office, and then you start having showings and having people to come and ride them around on the golf carts, which lots you want, or how many do you want, or whatever, I would think that is...
Appropriate.
Appropriate, and you do it however you say.
I mean, it could be years before all the lots are sold and built out, you know?
I don't think we're saying any amount has to be sold, as long as it is an intent that you have lots on the ground, that somebody's going to, and when you start doing all that infrastructure, you're going to want to sell some lots, I can guarantee that.
That is the plan, you know?
Right, right.
Yeah, we're, yeah, the whole goal was to overcome this complaint of, we don't trust developers anymore, because they say they're going to build this, they say they're going to build that, and it's three years later, and that Olympic pool ended up being a little family pool, and that walkway ended up falling into the river, and that, you know?
Yep.
All this stuff that we're dealing with right now.
Or create problems for down the road, and all of a sudden, you haven't done anything, and all of a sudden, you're having all these parties every weekend and events, Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday night, and all these neighbors that live around here, they calling on us, wanting to know what the heck's going on.
Sure. Of course, closest neighbor is me.
I think, I think...
If anybody's going to be calling to complain, that's me.
I think some of these folks...
All kinds of houses right there.
All kinds of houses around down there.
I think, sir, what you did without having enough conversation is you're trying to get around the issue of failed amenities, and plenty of developers do that. And so I applaud you for doing that, okay? And so in drawing it in, I think it's perfectly logical for you to do that.
So is it best to just let him withdraw? Or postpone, or what's the path of least resistance?
So if you postpone it, it's not necessarily going to come back to the board of commissioners if he goes another route. So I don't think that that's the most appropriate action. Most appropriate action would be to either deny his request or to allow him to withdraw his request. Now, his engineer is here, y'all may want to confer just a second. Of course, if you deny the request, then it cannot come back, we all know, for six months. If he withdraws, he can just start over, and there is no time wait, no time limit.
Yeah.
Question on the floor is to approve.
You want to withdraw, sir?
Yeah, well, it sounds like what we need to do then is withdraw and go back and start over then.
Well, it's not a start over, it's just...
I don't think it's a big start over, you've got to redraw some lines.
Well, okay, so if I understand that we still have to go back though and get it on the, the Planning Commission has to look at it?
Planning Commission, it's not a public hearing, so it goes on a pretty quick agenda, so.
Yeah, so basically, you know, regardless of what happens tonight, if they come back and they want to redraw the line, as we've talked about here, it'd be a concept plan submittal, doesn't require a public hearing, it does go to the Planning Commission. Quite frankly, you know, in a situation like this, redrawing that, and if you wanted to also submit first phase of preliminary plat, you, in theory, could do that. We could process it at the same time. But certainly, if you wanted to get the concept out of the way, that can be turned around pretty quickly.
I would request staff work with him.
Absolutely.
That would be the first Thursday in, in January, possibly?
Might not make that one, but, you know...
The third Thursday, quite possibly.
Yeah, most likely, we'd be looking toward that one.
Just for the, the staff's been great, wonderful to work with. We've really...
Well, they're going to help you smooth this out.
Okay. Yes, it sounds like what we want to do is withdraw without prejudice our application and hunt.
So you have, you can amend your motion, there was no second if you want to do that.
Mr. Chair, I'll amend my motion to allow him to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay. Any other debate or discussion? On the favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cotter.
Next item?
Let me see, here with me for a second. Mr. Brad Willis? No, I'm not, I'm sorry, forgive me, I'm jumping ahead. I got it marked. I218.
I want to take that one, okay. File RZ221201. Make a motion to approve request for conditional use for a massage for property located at tax map 082, parcel 076D.
Agreed.
This is a P1 zone piece of property, they are looking to do a massage in this location that previously has been prior to COVID, so this is a conditional use for massage.
Any questions?
Second.
Already got one of those.
For your support.
On the favor, raise your right hand.
Sorry.
All good. I can't keep up with the agenda.
Yeah, paperwork everywhere.
Mr. Brad Willis wants to speak on the next.
Evening, guys. I just want to first just mention the tiny elephant in the room, also known as the tiny houses. That was by no means, this is my wife cricketing, I'm sorry, not Brad, was our goal for this property. We did sit down with Danielle, the planning and zoning, not, she was doing her job, but she just asked us, any far out ideas, maybe possible ideas for our cottages, and we did mention tiny houses. That is no longer our plan, we've taken it off the narrative, we've taken it off the plan itself. I hope y'all got a copy of that, I have a hard copy here. I'd like to see it.
We got a copy.
Just the first one to introduce us, I have a home inspection business my dad started in 85, both small business owners. My wife owns Artsomey Studios, one in Grove Town and one just down the road, rushing the road. And just two small businesses. We've always worked with families, that's very important. You know, I've got the privilege of working with families, you know, with the experience of homeownership. My wife, through her business, has made lasting memories. Pottery studio, that one of y'all have a piece of pottery painted. But the reason we're here tonight is the farm, it's been a dream of ours for years. Own a farm. Kids, somebody asked us during this process, you know, one of the coolest things, one of the things that stand out to us, and one of the things that we stand in front of you is, is our kids. Our kids dream along with us, bless their hearts, they've heard about this dream. Standing in front of y'all and what God's done, put this property in our, our path, all that he's... We want to, he's told us, you know, God give us the hearts to create a peaceful and peaceful sanctuary here and to preserve this land. I also believe our vision for this property is laid out in your narrative that you have coincides with the statements, or the statement off the Visitors Bureau section of the Columbia County's website, which it says, quote, "It is our job to attract visitors, meetings, groups, and events which generate overnight lodging in Columbia County. While here, these visitors spend dollars on gas, food, beverage, lodging, and retail. Also coincide our goal is to create a destination that holds small events, gatherings, also plus accommodation visitors to enjoy many of our nearby local attractions such as disc golf, bass tournaments at Wildwood Park, three miles from Mistletoe." Another one of our passions is gardening, love landscape designing, gardening, like to have a produce stand at the road. Won't be Monday through Friday. Closing with the, the next project is the barn, you'll see pictures of that somewhere in your narrative. But inside, we want to make this a place again for small gatherings, do have pottery classes out there. Barn is 100 feet from our neighboring property, which is a pine tree, church owns, other neighbors are good 400 to 500 feet. Talking about a high traffic.
So if you're not building cottages or tiny homes, what specifically is the rezoning about? Because as my understanding, you can, you can have a fruit stand at your home without any kind of extra special zone.
Just the barn.
Or having parties, if you want to have a, you know, art class in your backyard or whatever gardening club, your garden club could meet at your home. What, what is the zoning for?
Getting the barn, you know, converted to, it needed, you know, some updating. And actually, like he said, when we, when we sat down with Danielle back in the summertime after we closed on the property, we said, okay, tell us, you know, what you want to do. And we said, you know, small events in the barn, use it, greenhouse, farmland, and we would, you know, in the future, cottages. Of course, the main house is, we're using for Airbnb part-time, so we put that on there, like one little line, and that's what the whole meeting was about. That's all they... all they focused.
Very sensitive.
Yeah, very sensitive to tiny.
But you don't need a special zoning for Airbnb.
Right. You don't need zoning.
Barn, yeah.
My question is, I guess to staff, what is the zoning for? What is going on so special here that zoning is necessary?
It'd be for them to rent the barn out for events, an event center, therefore they need a zoning to do that. They cannot, same thing we had the, just previous, if it's, if it's an event center, not a HOA amenity, it's different, look at it differently as our council referenced. Or rent it out to corporations that are having lunches, it's a business, it's not HOA amenity.
So this is about the event center part of it? Okay.
Correct.
This is not like a weekend type deal, this is seven days a week if body wants to.
I'm on by appointment only, the barn.
Day of the week.
If someone had it, uh, wanted to rent your event, uh, center, would you be bonding the insurance or would they have to supply an insurance bond for the event carried on your insurance?
You don't live on the property.
Hmm, part-time, I mean, it's our vacation home.
Kind of, uh, venue, give me an idea of what your, what your vision of the venue.
Are the venues?
Yeah.
Well, like I said, garden club, my art classes.
That's your garden club, okay?
Um, I mean, people have already, you know, seen it and would love to have Sunday school class party there, a birthday party there, I mean, it's already a beautiful barn, so, I mean, fifty people or less won't host weddings, you know, so it's not gonna be a party place or just, you know, a small, small little place.
But I like to close, guys, and just, never called a commissioner in my life, and I called all y'all yesterday. I've never called any politician.
I thought you were calling me about my truck because it was broken.
Yeah, you thought I was a service guy. But, uh, all of y'all answered my call.
I wish you had been and called me back yet.
Sorry, uh, sorry. But all of y'all answered my call, called me back, and we just, thank you for your assessment. Like for you to vote for a record. Us, but, you know, small businesses, small farms.
Any other questions?
Farming part, y'all been farming or for the?
Farming, I am a flower farmer.
Produce stand, vegetables or?
Correct. You're farming, you don't need a.
No, you don't need to do that.
No.
Cars are RA.
No, and I mean.
We're already zoned for that.
Right, yeah.
Just a barn.
It was just.
Any others? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, on, uh, file RZ two-two-one-two-oh-two, I make a motion to approve the request for rezoning from RA to S-one for the property located in tax map zero-zero-six parcel zero-four-seven in order to host art classes, small events on the property, and operate a produce stand with the following conditions. Use allowed, uh, in the RA zoning districts are allowed on the property, produce stand should meet the setbacks typically required for the RA zoning district, the forty-foot buffers must be planted and approved by the county landscape architect prior to the beginning operation of the event venue, tiny homes are not permitted on the site.
Second.
Are there any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, we have one, one item, we're, we're saying small events on the property, we think it'd be prudent, uh, to put a number on that, I, I believe they said no more than fifty people, um, you need to probably make that a condition of the S-one zoning.
I'll amend my, uh, motion to, uh, state that by small venue, venue, we mean, uh, fifty, uh, maximum of fifty.
Second.
If, if they're gonna be preparing food, they'll have to have commercial grade kitchen, Mr. Scarborough will be getting involved with our, our chief building official, there's all kind of stuff, keeping under fifty does help them meet those requirements, the requirements change a lot once you cross fifty.
Roads also, fire, fire had a comment on that also, wasn't it?
Right, right, the fifty is your trigger for, brings a lot of additional codes, it be, additional requirements, like the fire access roads, uh, the fire suppression and the type of things, want to keep it at forty.
Brad, you just want to make sure you stay in compliance with that, less, less than fifty.
Okay, there's a motion, the second on the floor, all in favor, Sig five, are raising your right hand. Motion carries. On to, I believe you're still up, come here, Mr.
Up on the next, okay. File RZ two-two-one-two-oh-four, I make a motion to approve the request for rezoning from PDT, PDD to P-one, property located at tax map oh-eight-two-eight, parcel zero-six-one and zero-six-one-eight, subject to the conditions enumerated in the December first, two thousand twenty-two planning commission report.
Second.
This is actually a reversion from PDD back to P-one, it was previously P-one, the difference is PDD allowed for a restaurant to be there, they're, I believe they're looking to do a real estate office in this location. Um, currently, we're, our, our GAS data shows a single parcel that is not correct, that's why, one of the conditions is that they take the two, uh, parcels, combine them, update our, our data, there's a, in your packet, there's a old plaque from fifty-two, I believe, there's the, there you go, it's hard to see if these two at the end are the actual parcel we're looking at right now. But the key is going from PDD back to P-one, which is a version back to what it was prior.
Any questions? I believe we have a motion, the second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Here he is.
Uh, file VA two-two-one-two-oh-two, uh, variance, section ninety-dash-ninety-eight, I make a motion to approve the request for our variance to section ninety-dash-ninety-eight, list of lotted structural requirements for property located at tax map zero-eight-two, parcels zero-six-one and zero-six-one-eight, to reduce the front setbacks for the existing building subject to the conditions enumerated in the December first, two thousand twenty-two planning commission report.
Second.
As you can see, the building here is outside of those yellow dots, the yellow dots for the actual setbacks, variance to allow the existing building to remain where it is.
Questions?
And just for clarification, it's outside where the expectations are because the road has moved, because they, they built it.
The roof's gotten a lot larger, yes, yes ma'am, and the, this line here is actually what we're showing as being the actual property line, DOT did acquire property from this, so all that'll be updated with the new ads built and a combination plan.
Any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Here he is. Mr. Richardson, I believe we're. Got one more?
Got one more.
Go again. I turned sixty tomorrow, can you tell? Yeah. Please, thank you.
Uh, file VA two-two, uh, one-two-oh-one, I make a motion to approve the request for variances to section ninety-dash-ninety-eight, list of lot and structural requirements in ninety-dash-one-thirty-nine, buffers and screening for property located at tax map zero-seven-eight D, parcel oh-five-one-G, to reduce the front and side building setbacks and reduce the buffer requirements for the existing buildings, subject to the conditions enumerated in the December first, two thousand twenty-two planning commission report.
Here you have another, another instance of existing buildings falling outside of our current requirements, building went more than a year without having an active business in it, therefore they're required to bring it up to code, this variance is asking to not have to tear the building down and move it, uh, one of the conditions is also that they have to put screening up, your yellow lines represent the screening, uh, code does require that outdoor storage is screened from public view, um, there is a condition that if the buildings are replaced, they have to meet current code, so this is variance for the existing building. U-Haul, that, that either has to go behind the storage or, or disappear from the lot, it needs to get behind the screening.
Any more questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Mr. Chairman, Richardson.
Make a motion to postpone the first reading of resolution, page forty-one, page forty-seven to the.
I'll give you that, uh, as you know, we were working through some issues with our streetlight districts, there was actually, uh, some letters that needed to go out with this one that have not been put out yet, so y'all remember that from our audit, we had some issues, we've worked through all those issues now, we have a good process in place, uh, but this is one that we'll need to postpone until the seventeenth, just to get the letters out.
Any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Legal matters?
Illegal matters.
A review by committee, have some folks who've asked to speak at the public comments session, and I'm gonna ask Jennifer Lowers. Get your name and address to the record, please.
Jennifer Lowers, five-oh-six Oak Chase Drive. I know it's a little unorthodox, our actual vote isn't till the, I think it's the January third or the.
Something like that.
Yep. Um, the reason I'm here now is because we have a lot of issues that need to be addressed, so you have time to mull those over before the vote, because I don't want to put you on a pinch at the last minute. Um, how many of you here are familiar right now with the property and the proposal? Have you got any information on it? It's been years, that's why I ask, I don't want to waste your time going through stuff you already know, are you all familiar with it? Okay, so what the proposal is, is we're gonna doze a home that already exists in a neighborhood that stood for decades and replace it with a commercial property that holds four units and dozens of parking spaces. I'm asking, how did we get to this point? Because I've sat here and watched this process and it's really efficient and it's working really well, I don't see if this proposal was brought now at this time that you would have even approved it, because it's in a protected corridor, correct?
A protected corridor?
What you mean by protected?
Protected, help me, what is the, what? It says it's protected, it's been marked as for, um, special consideration.
But I don't think the board could, I don't think the board could actually speak to whether they would approve something or not approve something before.
No, I'm only asking what that means, what are the requirements for that? I'm sorry, I'm gonna tap you in.
Overly district?
The endangered animals, the wetlands, and it says it has a higher criteria that it has to meet the needs of neighborhood and be in line with the neighborhood.
Yes, and it's already zoned commercial, this is just a, a tweak to the commercial, he, he can build what he had approved without coming back to us, he's just asking a tweak.
So that plan has no expiration date?
Do you mean his, his?
The one he has approved right now, it has no expiration date.
No.
Okay.
Zoning, yeah, it's commercial zoning is what they're, you're referring to, you want it to remain residential.
No, no, that's actually not what I'm asking, he's proposing a second plan, what I'm asking is, the aesthetics of that property are supposed to be in line with the surrounding neighborhood, when you look at that property, it's actually replacing a pre-existing home, his shares property lines with homes, so I don't understand how it ever met that standard and got approved in the first place, so I really am just trying to ask and understand that process.
I can't speak to four or five years ago.
Okay.
Through it, but anyone can ask any, for any property, property to be rezoned to whatever they choose, now whether it goes through or not is a separate issue.
And please forgive me on this ignorance, I know you do it all the time and I'm trying.
Oh, no. Oh, you're good.
What she got me here is, this subject parcel is located within the Evans area neighborhoods, uh, the character area of the Vision two thousand thirty-five future land use map, the intent of this character area type is to preserve established neighborhoods and create quality new residential construction at suburban densities, generally they are characterized by moderate density residential development, street networks, da-da-da-da, so that's where this property stands, okay? The plan has already gotten approved, it's my understanding that you can't go back on it, you can't help us on that as a, as a commission, I understand that.
Or what, he's just trying to get the building tweaked, the design tweaked, make it fit on the property?
So that's, so that's why this isn't a big deal, I'm guessing, because what you're going from is the plan that exists now to the plan he's proposing.
Trying to work with folks.
Okay, so this is what I'm gonna tell you now, the reason we've gotten this mess as a neighborhood is because we didn't understand that when it was zoned residential, and that's our mistake, and, and I got that, um, but I think what we understood is, we had trust in this process, and so when we saw that, we weren't alarmed as a community, because when it was zoned residential, it was our understanding that we'd be in line with what exists there now, a single-family home can support one business, okay? We weren't expecting four businesses in a parking lot. When he proposed it, and you all, not you all, because the council's even changed since then, when it got approved, our neighborhood didn't come out, we don't have an HOA, we didn't even know, and the neighborhood trusted that it would stay in line with what it was, I mean, you have a house standing there for decades, nobody ever dreamed that this nightmare of a property would be proposed, it shares the property line with pre-existing homes, I just watched you ask that man about easements and distances, and you did so good insuring the neighbor's property, we didn't get that, okay? The system failed us that time, you did a great time this time, now I'm asking you, a mistake was made, please don't make a bigger mistake and give him more spaces and more parking lot, I know you can't do much, it's a small ask, I'm just saying, let's stick to the plan we already have, that's all we can do, but I'm also gonna remind you that that may be all you can do, and that may be all we can do, but it's not all Mr. Lawrence can do, and he's the one who owns the property, there's nothing stopping him from realizing now that we're all in opposition to this property, he has a hundred percent disapproval from the neighbors that share his property line, I need more than that to get a speed bump put in my neighborhood, just a speed bump, and that doesn't alter the road forever, this is altering how we function as a neighborhood forever, that house will outlast all of you, okay? When you build that building, I want you to think of that when you consider it, I understand that Mr. Lawrence had no idea at the time how much this would impact his neighbors, but he knows now, and I'm asking you to get creative in the next few days and find a way to fix this mistake, and that's what I'm saying, if it means just giving him a no and disproving with prejudice, do that, that's the bare minimum, though, I think we can do better, I really do, um, I've offered to buy the easement from him, he got it through abandonment for ten dollars, as being sassy, I didn't expect him to sell it to me for double its value, but I'm getting creative.
Now, on this piece of property too, it actually borders commercial property fronts, here's Ferry, and as well, the Zaxby's was already a compromise to a certain degree when you go in, so I, I understand what you're saying, but in reality, may touch residential, but it's, also, it also touches more commercial properties.
I can understand how you would think that when you come in the neighborhood and you see Zaxby's across the street.
I go out that gate every day, yeah, so I see it every day.
Yeah, oh, and, uh, trust me, we get a lot of people passing through now, we used to not, it used to not be a thoroughfare, that's why it doesn't have any sidewalks and why it's no longer walkable, um, when it opened up like that, thank you for the park and the road to school, it makes our drives quicker, but there were unintended consequences like traffic.
There always are.
I know, um, but when you actually look at our neighborhood, Zaxby's is not the standard, and I'm asking that, we're, we're a community of excellence, right? Zaxby's isn't our standard, you're gonna meet a woman in a minute who's my neighbor, she's your standard, she's what we're aiming for in that area, hold Mr. Lawrence to that standard of excellence that you hold each other to, that you hold your employees to, and remember, the reason we're not here in opposition right now is because most of the, our neighbors are firefighters, their nurses, their mothers, they're wiping bottoms and noses and putting up fires, so they're cha, counting on you to be our voice, and we don't know this process like you do, so when you spend these days, help us find a solution, help us de-escalate and find common ground with Mr. Lawrence, because I see his name on a lot of these, you know him, you deal with him a lot, you have that leverage to make that bridge between our communities so we don't have to keep fighting over this, and so my neighbor who rebuilt from fire and still wanted to live here, doesn't lose her dream home and have to look at a parking lot, because that's not what she signed up for, and if she'd asked her real estate agent, is that commercial, they would say, oh, yeah, because of this, when a residential area, they'll be mindful of that, you're not gonna have a parking lot with four units, and if you do, you'll have a huge buffer, she didn't get that, and that's all I'm asking, if you have any questions, I'm good, I'm not getting I'm not going to bombard you with all that stuff. You have a planning committee that does a wonderful job, okay? But I will be back here when you vote to remind you of what we're fighting for.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Danielle Farr. And I just, actually, I forgot to tell Ms. Jennifer, just if you could stay to five minutes, we'd appreciate it.
Sure.
We just ask that you, not, don't repeat the same thing. We'd appreciate that.
I live directly behind the property, so this is my property line. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Chairman Duncan, I actually went to your website.
Can you give us your name and address for the record?
Oh, five-five-one Forest Crossing. I actually went to your website first because through my search, I saw that you are very, very big on implementing common sense solutions to reduce traffic and congestion. This property has one entrance and one exit in the plan onto Park Lane. That entrance and exit means that everybody going through has to go through the neighborhood where we're already having speed bump. I don't even know what they have up, some kind of barrier, it's weird. It's an issue. I'm a teacher in this county. I see five, six, seven different buses from different schools going through that neighborhood. No sidewalks. That's dangerous. So all of the traffic from his property have to go through the neighborhood. They're not going to be able to turn around. The Zaxby's is a median, and then there's double lines beyond the median. When I asked about that, they said, we'll just do road construction. I believe that, her name was Danielle as well, when she emailed back, we're going to do road construction. So now you're going to tear up the road. So all the people coming in from Westlake, that's going to be an issue. They can't get to Lakeside. That's how they get to Lakeside through the neighborhood. It's a traffic nightmare, so there's your platform right there with the traffic. That's a problem. Another problem was with the 2021 February eighteenth, we met with the, with the planning committee when he withdrew. One condition said that he needed to have a stormwater pond. There is no room on there. Now, I know with each revision, it's a clean slate, but if then, if he needed a stormwater pond then, he still needs it. You brought up Zaxby's. Behind Zaxby's, there's a retention pond. There's a difference. There's a difference in the flooding, the contamination, that anything that's coming out is actually, it's going down into that pond where all the cats live. That's, that's where it's going. There's no room for that. So what's going to happen, I watched a beautiful story about construction, he's going to have to lift up that land, no matter what. So his yard is shaped like a bowl, so it's going to have to be lifted. My backyard is the fence, okay? So they told him he needs a twenty-foot buffer. That is incorrect because in your codes and ordinances, it says buffers and fences. Landscape buffers are required between any single-family use and non-single-family use as well as multifamily and commercial or industrial uses. A thirty-foot landscape buffer is required between any single-family use and non-single-family use. So that twenty-foot buffer that he has proposed, your codes and ordinance say that's not okay.
How would that work, Matt?
I'd have to go pull the file, but I believe this is actually a PUD.
It is a PUD.
And when you do a PUD, you actually.
This is from the C-one zoning.
I understand. If you have a PUD, you actually create your own buffers in the PUD, so a previous commission could have very well approved a twenty-foot buffer between the residential part and the commercial part. I'd have to go read the file.
Yeah, we'll check it out. No, I just want to make it, you know, on the table.
But in a PUD, you can't have smaller buffers.
Which is, is very scary because then we get that traffic, well, there's going to be a dumpster right behind my house. In the 2021 plan, they told him, you cannot have a dumpster up against somebody's property. Again, this is a clean slate, but the dumpster's back. You can't do that because any hazardous waste or anything in that dumpster, like I said, his yard's a bowl, it's going to have to be lifted. My yard slopes down, thank gosh, because Furious Ferry, that whole area right there is a major flood zone. Floods out bad all the time. I'm sure you've seen pictures and everything, cars underwater. Luckily, we purchase this property here, we love it, but our front yard is a little lifted, so we don't flood, but when they lift his yard, our backyard is going to be soup, gone. Highest and best use of property, goodbye. So we lose that. All of that water, all of that is going to flow down and across the street, I think it's five-five-three Peter Brown, who has emailed. His yard's going to be messed up. Reed Creek, Reed Creek has critically endangered animals in there. That hasn't, that retention pond across the street is not going to help Reed Creek. So that's a protected environment. I've got with the master gardeners at UGA extension, all of them, they agree. This is not, it's not going to help that area. So that area that we all love, we love to walk in, it's beautiful in there, I love it. It's beautiful. I take my kids on field trips there. You know, we go, that is a part of the community. That's what we want. Our children are important. I love my own children and the children that I teach. I want them to grow in a community that is beautiful. I want them to see me fighting for something that's important, not just my yard, but that area that I take them to. We look at snakes and everything, how cool is that? That's what's important. Not a two-story ugly building with one exit and entrance that is going to cause traffic issues and probably accidents, kids getting off buses and everything else, lawsuits, crazy. I even wrote to the senator, because this is something that is important to me, because yes, my property, I'm not going to lie, but also all those children in the neighborhood that I teach. I care about them. This is important. And the Senator's office said they would get in touch with me and they would get in touch with you because this is a serious issue, but I'm asking you to please look over the files from 2021, see what they say, even though it's a clean slate, that same issues are present. I am not opposed to a business right there, not at all, but let's do it right. Let's do it right where it benefits the community, where it benefits that neighborhood, where you don't have in your codes unnecessary traffic coming into a residential neighborhood. Let's do it right. Let's make, Columbia County is amazing. I'm not from here. My husband was in the Navy. We retired here. This is my home now. I love it. Let's keep that. When you get rid of all these neighborhoods, you put all these, what's happening? You're losing everything. Our schools are incredible. I listen to the superintendent talk, and I'm just blown away. Loves this area. This is just, I am proud to be an educator in Columbia County. Let's make these kids, these kids proud to live here and know that they have a voice in their own community. Let's show them. I hope that you look them over. I appreciate your time. I hope you have a great holiday. I'm on break, so.
Take care.
Thank you very much.
Mr. John Arnold. Maybe if you'll just state your name and address for the record, sir.
Yes, I'm John Arnold. I live at five-sixteen Crystal Creek West in the Forest Creek subdivision. I don't have a whole lot of add. I would, I would just like to ask for clarification. So it's already been zoned resident, I mean, commercial.
Correct.
So we're saying, or is what you're saying, then, we cannot stop the process from him tearing down the house, building a strip mall?
Matt, you want to walk us just through the?
He, he has.
The process.
Yeah, he has zoning, and he has an approved concept plan for his site, but he could walk in here tomorrow and then turn in plans to Mr. Scarborough and start construction.
So the answer is, we can't stop it.
I don't know, I want to say you can't stop it. I know from our standpoint, from staff's standpoint, he has the approvals he needs for us to review plans.
Yes. Now, you know, I was at the, the public zoning meeting, the prior one, and when it came time to a vote, there was a hesitation. It was awkward for about ten seconds when they asked, you know, for, or is anybody going to second? It was awkward because you know, deep down in their gut, that this, this whole thing of tearing down the house and putting up a strip mall is a bad idea, and I believe I heard you say earlier that you were not in favor of a business being put into a neighborhood. Exactly what's happening. So if there is a way that we can, I think Danielle said it earlier, we don't have a problem with the business that's there now. You know, it's a house, it looks like part of the neighborhood, and I know it's not this commission that paid the change, but we're here now, and I would like to know if there is a way that we can let him keep his business the way it is now and not approve that strip mall. That's my question to the commission.
When you say strip mall, tell me what you're envisioning. Have you seen the, the renderings of what he's wanting to do?
Yes, four businesses in a building? That's a strip mall. And you can call it whatever you want.
So just, I think to be clear on the process, he's approved, it's zoned, he can, what can he do without even coming back in here?
Build construction plans for what he has approved tomorrow. Right, as long as he meets those conditions, he can fit his plans, and once he's been through plan review and it meets all the conditions that are required, all the building codes, all the environmental requirements that are have to do with the site, start building.
He'd ask to donate it to you. He could ask whatever he wanted, yeah. Correct. But I'm just trying to make sure that you're clear with where we are. Has the approval he needs to build. It's.
Asking to change.
Correct.
The look of it, change the layout of it. There's some requirements he's, he's got by deed, he's got to provide access to the property north of it, the, the rest of the piece of property that separates Forest Creek from Furious Ferry Road. There's access easement there, so anything that develops there has access down to Park Lane as well. He will have to have retention. He can do underground retention. It'd have to be a pond that we have. Lakeside Park, we have a retention pond under the parking lot. Most people don't realize that, but under that parking lot is a huge retention pond. So you double your space, pond and park in the same location, so he'll have to meet runoff, he'll have to meet water quality, so all those requirements that are on everybody, he'll have to meet. He can't just walk in here and avoid everything that's already been approved.
Right.
I, I don't know off the top of my head. I didn't have, didn't pull that file. Do you know, Scott?
It's C-one.
Mr. Ready.
He are ready.
He has, he has an access easement across Mr. Lawrence's property. He has the right to cross over Mr. Lawrence's property to get to Park Lane. That's recorded on a deed. I've, I've looked at that. It's been years ago, but I have, Mr. Ready has access across Mr. Lawrence's property by, by deed. Mr. Lawrence can't go north.
So again, my question to the commission is, is there a way that we can stop this process and let it just stay as is, other than to tie up, you know, file something in court to try to delay this and blah, blah, blah?
Frankly, I don't think so. Has the approvals he needs. It's all about the design.
So it sounds like a precedence has been set, then, that, you know, anybody that owns a house in a neighborhood, Nob Hill or Westlake or any of these neighborhoods can turn it into a business.
Not necessarily.
Well, it sounds like the precedence has been set.
If you look at the, all the, across the street of Westlake, I live in Westlake forever, that whole development that went up, lots of friends and neighbors were on me, you have to stop that. We like, we're looking at woods, and I said, it's private property for sale, go buy it. I can't stop it. I don't have the right to stop the development.
Well, it's certainly a sad day in Columbia County and in the Forest Creek subdivision. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Driver, what would happen if the commission somehow ordered Mr. Lawrence to not build the commercial structure on that property as a zone?
That would be, you'd have to initiate a county initiated rezoning, and you'd essentially have to pay for the loss in value.
We'd get sued, I assume, if we took away his rights for that property?
Either you pay full value or you.
Pay what you determine to be full value, then he could potentially counter sue you and say that it's higher than even you say it is, but you'd have to pay that difference from commercial to residential.
Any kind of changes, alteration?
Right, if he sticks to the old plan, that's what he has approval for. The new plan is what he gets that approval for. The new plan, but that's, I can't speak to him.
Thank you. We need to move on. Apologies. Okay, we have a couple executive session items, but before we get to that, I want to take a point of personal privilege since everybody has stayed and you've been along on by now. I just want to mention Commissioner Galias, who has served with us for four years, and he's rotating off, this is his last meeting, and we're just very appreciative of your, appreciative of your service. Thank you for all you've done for the residents of, have a little token of our appreciation, and again, just want to thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to, also, I'd like to thank Commissioner Galias for.
My mic wasn't on.
I'm sorry. I'd like to thank Commissioner Galias for his service to our country, to his county district, but all he has done, and he has been a friend of mine for a long time, we served on planning commission together for, for many years, and then we've served the last four years, and I just want to thank you. It's been a pleasure to serve with you. Thank you.
For myself as well. Thank you, sir. You know, well, there are two rules for anyone who's given permission to speak, and one is you be on time, and the other is that you be brief, and, and I just have to say it's been my honor and privilege to serve our people in the best county in, in Georgia, bar none, and we are the benchmark for all the others. And, you know, I thank the other commissioners for their partnership. I thank the staff. Columbia County's in a great place, have a great future. So I, you know, a public servant walks with the truth, and he makes decisions based upon steering toward the right thing, and then he accepts the consequences. So I like to think that that's what I've done, and consequence has come, and I'm well with that, and with, with the Lord's plan for me. So, you know, my people are always going to be the ones who have the wide attention spans and the deep hearts, and for all others, I thank you for allowing me and my wife to go and smell the flowers a little bit, and we're going to start a new life as a recovering commissioner.
Recovering politician.
So thank you all, and God bless and keep us all.
Thank you, David.
And we have just a couple of executive session items that we should.
Mr. Chairman, my items are personnel issues. Are they to be handled in public, or do we need to go into executive session?
You can handle it in public if you so desire.
Right.
I make a motion to approve William Eubank as interim deputy director for Engineering Services Division with an annual salary of ninety-four thousand, oh thirty-six eighty to go into effect at the pay period beginning December eighteenth.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Thank you. One more. I make a motion to approve the employee contracts with Ashlyn Bedgood, Robbie Bennett, Shelley Blackburn, Madeline Brantley, Garrett Dragano, Clint Hardy, Ronald Hutto, Michael Murphy, Anita Patel, Stephen Prather, Harold Sparrow, Byron Sullivan, Ashley Swain, and David Taylor. Thank you.
You're not seated, that was very well. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Why'd you have to throw that out?
Because I'm.
All right.
Okay, Commissioner Richardson, you're up.
I make a motion to approve thirteen thousand, six hundred dollars to Zane Sereni and Ahmed Masali, tax parcel zero-seven-one-zero-zero-two-F, fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars to Courtney Merchant, tax parcel zero-seven-one-D-zero-seven-six, accept the donation from Gerald P. Havens, tax parcel zero-seven-one-D-zero-seven-five, to obtain right of way and or easements for the Hardy-McManus Road Widening Project.
Second.
Raise your right hand. I give you like a, a B-plus on that one.
Thank you, sir. I make a motion to approve fourteen thousand, six hundred eighty-one dollars to MMCK Boulevard LLC, tax parcel zero-seven-eight-B-one-three-seven-C, to obtain right of way and or easements for the Flowing Wells widening project.
Second.
Any questions?